Oh.
I'm going to call the Camarillo City Council, CSV, CLB's successor agency for the 70th order.
And let's do a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tenenbaum.
Here.
Councilmember Trembley.
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Here.
And Mayor Kildee.
Here. Okay, so we have a quorum, so we're going to go into closed session and I'm going to ask Counselor, would you please announce the reasons why we're going into closed session?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have three items on closed session. The first one is existing litigation, Real versus City of Camarillo. We have real property negotiations related to 200 Flynn Road, Camarillo, and discussion of property price and terms. And then we have another existing litigation matter, which is the OPV Coalition versus Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. And if there's any reportable action, I will make that report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, those are the reasons we're going into closed session and we're going to recess now and we'll be back at 5 o'clock.
All right, I am going to reconvene our city council meeting for December 10th, and I'll ask the city clerk to do a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tennyson.
Here.
Councilmember Trembley.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Here.
And Mayor Kildee.
Here. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Santangelo, would you kindly lead us in the flag salute tonight?
Hand over heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so the next on the agenda is the reorganization, and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Tennyson.
Mr. Mayor, if you could join me up under our city seal, I'd appreciate that. May I have your gavel?
You certainly can.
All right. It's to pay you back for last night. It is an absolute great pleasure to recognize Kevin Kildee at the end of his fifth, count them, five, fifth term as mayor of the city of Camarillo. I've known Kevin a long time. I had the pleasure in 1996, when he ran for city council, I was a captain with the Camerio Police Department, and I got to give him the briefing on law enforcement activities in Camerio. And he kept looking at his watch, so I knew I was going too long. Kevin has been an absolute great friend, a joy to work with. He has led the council with absolute integrity, and his love for the city of Camerio is unquestioned. The man grew up here. His family has a history of helping to form this city. His dad was one of the founding members that helped lead the incorporation of the city of Camerio. He was a founding member of creating the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, which preceded the incorporation of the city of Camerio. So the neat thing about Kevin is, he doesn't script a speech. He has so much anecdotal and historical memory of our great city, our great region, and he has so many great stories. I used to stop by their store, and all of these old guys, I mean, they had to be like 69 years old, like Kevin and me. I was much younger then, and they were the founding fathers of our city. And his dad's store, when it was his dad here, Bob Kildee, was like the Floyd's Barber Shop in Mayberry with Andy Griffith. It's where everybody hung out and where you heard all the stories and the history of your community. And I appreciated that. Kevin is continuing with that, and so Mr. Mayor should be proud of your fifth year as mayor, and I hope you look forward to a little bit more time off coming into the next year. If I could invite, who am I inviting up? Uh-oh, I lost my script. I know we have dignitaries present. Boy, this is inappropriate. Can start, isn't it? I'd like to invite up Kate Vega from Congresswoman Julia Brownlee's office.
Good evening. My name is Kate Vega, and on behalf of Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, I would like to recognize Mayor Kevin Kildee for his outstanding leadership and immeasurable contributions to the city of Camerio and its residents. Congresswoman Brownlee has often said, "It's her greatest privilege to represent the people of California's 26th Congressional District, which is fortunate to include this beautiful and uniquely hospitable community." Throughout her time in office, Congresswoman Brownlee has worked to move our community forward and do all that she can to improve the lives and livelihoods of all those who call Camerio home. When Camerio was hit by the devastating mountain fire at the start of Mayor Kildee's term, the Congresswoman was inspired by our community's unwavering support for one another, and as we entered the arduous process of recovery and building, the Congresswoman applauds Mayor Kildee and the entire city council and staff and our first responders for all their efforts during this difficult time. As Congresswoman Brownlee remains committed to working with local, state, and federal officials to ensure that our community has the support they need when they need it, the Congresswoman also extends her heartfelt appreciation to Mayor Kildee and the council for their continued partnership and shared commitment to ensuring the well-being of Camerio's residents. And for his dedicated and exceptional public service, I am pleased to present Mayor Kildee with a certificate and congressional recognition on behalf of Congresswoman Brownlee.
Next up, I'd like to invite Michelle Sevilla with Assemblymember Steve Bennett's office.
Good evening. Well, thank you. On behalf of Assemblymember Bennett, it's an honor to present a certificate of recognition for, again, your fifth year of service as mayor in this role. You certainly are a good example of being a proud wielder of a city's long history, carrying that torch from your father to the extensive family impact that you have left personally, as well as your relatives. I just really appreciate the integrity echoing Vice Mayor Tennyson's sentiments, the integrity with which you led, always communicating with all of the community leaders, including Assemblymember Bennett, and the ongoing relationship you've had, but just really appreciate your leadership and your continued service for our community. So, thank you so much. I'd like to present a certificate from the state.
Next up, County Supervisor Kelly Long.
Good evening, Mayor Kildee. I wanted to be here personally to say thank you so much. For all of our constituents, we just greatly appreciate your leadership for all the years and your dedication. You, your family, it's just, we sleep better knowing that you have been at the lead, especially with the mountain fire, with all the years that we have worked together. I just think that the county and the city's partnership, all of the city councils, it's just, it's really a pleasure to work with you, and I just think how lucky we are. So, thank you so much. And so, on behalf of the county supervisors, in recognition to all the years you've served, thank you so much.
I also have several certificates, Mr. Mayor, for people that couldn't be here. I'm not going to read them with all the therefor's and whereses, but you have certificates of recognition from Senator Monique Lamon, Assemblymember Jackie Irwin, the city of Ventura, and the city of Thousand Oaks. So, congratulations, sir. And I did this out of order intentionally. All of these outsiders that are presenting you with these acclamations don't know you as well as the other four people that serve on council with you. We appreciate you. We appreciate your hard work. We appreciate your dedication to the city of Camerio. We appreciate the fact that anybody can reach out to you at any time of the day or night. All they have to stop do is stop in Kildee's clothing and visit with you, and you visit with everybody there. I just, I, it's been such an honor to serve with you for the last three years. It was an honor to work with you in my previous profession, and I have the utmost respect for you. And sir, on behalf of the city council of Camerio, we present you with your fifth gavel and plaque for your time as mayor.
A few words. We had some unique challenges this year, but we also had a lot of success stories, and I want to thank my council. And I've had the privilege to serve with a lot of councils in my tenure as being a representative of the city on the city council. And all of you up here in the dais are first among equals, the best and the brightest. You're absolutely great. You're doing a great job for the city, and that's what it's all about, giving back your time to the great city that's been so good to all of us here. I'd be remiss to not, to thank my wife Janet, who's been by my side for over 30 years now, my daughter Miranda, and my daughter Madeline, who allow me to do this job. And being mayor is 24/7. There's very little, if any, time off, but it's an honor and a privilege to serve the residents and the constituents of Camerio and the 3rd District in particular. I did the very best I could. I laid it out on the field. I gave it my all here. I had successes. I had some not successes here, but the end result is really good. And part of the really good things that we were able to accomplish this year, and I'm going to forget some of them, but this council chambers here, the remodeled council chambers, and what a unique opportunity this is, this will be to carry on the great camera tradition here of public service. Also, our water reclamation plant, we're going to be redoing and reamping our water reclamation plant for hopefully the next decades to come here. We opened Chick-fil-A, which is really good this year. We've got some new businesses that have moved into the city of Camerio, and we all know that we need to have high-paying jobs in this city. One of the things I'm most proud of, and I know my colleagues are too, is the Vista Campanero. And we were able to move that from start to almost finish here, and not only rental units, but people that were able to purchase their first homes. And we were there, and we dedicated that Saturday, and I had a lady come up to me with tears in her eyes, saying, "This was the first house that we've ever owned," and how impressed she was and how thankful she was for all of my colleagues, past and present, that was, we're able to make that come to fruition here. We all know the affordability is going to be a challenge, but this council is completely dedicated to that. We're also dedicated to a lot of other things. The homelessness is one issue, too, that we've made great strides this year and will continue to make great strides. I want to thank staff. I want to thank Greg Ramirez, our city manager, and Carmen Nichols, our assistant city manager. We, or myself, refer to them as the dynamic duo. And never forget, when we hired Greg, it was actually during COVID, and I thought to myself, "Man, there's something about this soft-spoken person here. He had something about him." I want to thank both of you for helping me, and all the staff that's up on the dais. I'd name them by names, but I'll forget somebody. But I do especially want to talk very, very briefly about public safety, and Eric, and his sworn and not sworn in our city, and what a great job that they have done in the past and they continue to do here. I want to end it by thanking two people that have made this year so important to me, because I can be a little bit scatterbrained, and I can be kind of tossed and turned and pug, pulled in all kinds of different directions, but Laura Womack in the city manager's office have been unbelievable to me. I've called her at 11 o'clock at night, and she answers my call. I've called her on Saturdays. I've called her on Sundays. Unbelievable. Laura, I want to thank you so much for putting up with me. And I also want to thank Monique Martinez as well. She has been excellent to me, too. We've got a great staff in the city manager and the assistant city manager's office, and all the employees of our great city. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I can't thank you enough for all you do for us. And I've said that I'm always going to end this, and I totally believe this, Camerio's best days are ahead of it. The next mayor coming in is going to do a great job. The next vice mayor is going to do a great job, whoever that is, and full speed ahead. And it's an honor and a privilege in my lifetime to be representative of the city in this capacity. And again, council and constituents, thank you for putting up with me this year. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm going to ask council members to provide any comments they want, and I will start with Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Thank you. Well, tonight, I definitely want to take a moment to thank you, Kevin, for the many years that you've dedicated to service, servicing the city of Camerio and the people of Camerio. You truly are a walking encyclopedia, and so I learn something about you every single time, and something about our city, and I'm just so grateful to have that. This has been a challenging year in so many ways, and through all that, and through your steady leadership, and your deep experience, and your calm presence, all of that, all of those qualities have made a tremendous difference. I've learned so much in working alongside you, whether it's in our committees or collaborating on day-to-day issues that shape our community. You have always been available, and I really appreciate that. You're always willing to share your insight, and you're always open and so kind in every one of our conversations. Your long-term commitment to Camerio is something that I deeply appreciate and admire. So, Kevin, thank you so much for your service, for your guidance, for being a mentor, and also for being the example for all of us. We are truly grateful for everything that you do every single day for our city. Thank you so much.
Mr. Trembley.
That's right. I'll uncharacteristically be brief. We have a, I don't know if it's a tradition, but at least an established practice on the city council, when we agree with the comments that have been made by our colleagues, we simply say ditto. I can't improve on the comments that have already been made. They've been, they've been excellent. I will say, thank you, Kevin. You are an excellent example for us, but the one thing I want to focus on, Vice Mayor Tennyson used the word absolute integrity. Michelle Sevilla also used the term integrity. Integrity is what characterizes Kevin Kildee, and I am grateful to you for your service. I am grateful to you for your public service, and we have all benefited by you being mayor. So, thank you, Kevin.
Councilmember Santangelo.
Thank you. Kevin, I want to thank you for your leadership this year. Your experience and wisdom from your many years of service is evident in the way you lead, in the way you help lead this council, in the way you help lead this community. I hear from a lot of people in the public and from staff what a well-oiled machine this council is, how respectful we are, how productive we are, and that doesn't just happen. I think that happens because you set the tone as mayor, and you helped lead us this year. So, thank you. I am proud to call you a friend and a colleague, and I'm honored to serve with you. Thank you for your service.
And I think I've made my fair share of statements about Kevin, but I just want to finish it with, Kevin, I appreciate you as a person. I appreciate you as a public servant, and I appreciate you as a friend, and I look forward to the next year serving with you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the meeting is yours now.
Okay. Thank you all for your kind comments. They don't go unnoticed. I really appreciate it. I've made a lot of comments, but I appreciate, I appreciate really what everybody does here, everybody. Okay, so we're going to go down to the reorganization now, the nomination and appointments, and it's going to be for the City Council, the Camerio Library Board, and the Camerio Sanitary District. And I'll ask our city clerk, Carrie, would you like to take over at this particular point?
Yes. This is the time for reorganization for the City Council, and so I'm just going to review the nomination process. I'm going to open the floor for nominations for each position individually. First will be the nominations for Office of the Mayor and then for the Office of Vice Mayor. If there is only one nomination, a motion, and a second will close the nomination floor. If there are multiple nominations, we'll vote on the nominations in an order they were received until we have a successful majority vote. Each nomination will require a motion and a second. So the first one we're going to start with is the Office of Mayor. So are there any nominations for Office of Mayor?
I'd like to nominate David Tennyson.
I will second that.
Okay. And I'm going to do a roll call vote on that. So Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
And we're going to Vice Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're going to go down to, we're going to close those nominations since that's done, and we're going to go to the Vice Mayor. Are there any nominations for the Office of Vice Mayor?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Martinez Bravo as Vice Mayor.
And may I second that, please?
Okay, now do a roll call vote. Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor or Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
And I guess Councilmember Kildie now, and Councilmember Tremblay, and Councilmember Santangelo.
Yes.
Yes.
And so that closes those nominations, and we'll turn it over to the mayor, the new
I thank my fellow council members for the trust they've placed in me. I look forward to continued service. My life has been about service to our community in many different aspects, in service on nonprofits and organizations like Rotary, the Lions Club, and the Optimist Club. I love this city. I've lived here since 1979. I raised my little girl, and I say that tongue-in-cheek since she's two inches taller than me. I now have three beautiful grandchildren here. But in order of thanks, I have to start with my beautiful wife Valerie. Valerie, raise your hand. She's the one that gave me permission. She's the one that gave me permission in 2022 to get off my rear end and get more engaged in the community to run for council. And we met with mayor emeritus Charlotte Craven, so Charlotte could go over her calendar with my dear bride and say, this is how much time it takes. I don't think my wife places much credibility in Charlotte anymore because it's taking twice as much time as Charlotte indicated. But I talked to Charlotte today, and I said, it's because you were there so long, you didn't have to learn as quickly as I did. But thank you, Valerie. I appreciate your support ongoing, and I look forward to the future. I also have to thank the person that brought me into this world, my 89-year-old mother, and I'm going to get a little sad, Mary Tennyson. 69 years, and six weeks ago in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, she brought her first child into the world, and without her, I wouldn't be here. So, thank you, Mom. Then there's my little girl Jessie, who was born and raised in Camerio, went through our education system, and taught for 14 or 15 years, and has been an administrator and is a principal at Montavista Middle School. And then there's my irascible youngest grandchild, Ellie. Ellie, listen to Grandpa. There's little Ellie back there. My wife and I had six grandsons, and when Jessie told me, Dad, we didn't even want to go to the reveal party because we knew it was going to be another boy. But I got little Ellie, and most of city staff knows her because she comes through with office hours every Friday in City Council. My grandson Ethan, Ethan, wave. Then my outgoing grandson Evan, stand up, Evan. My sister-in-law Kaylee, and I would be remiss in not introducing my mom's favorite child. I was number one, he was number seven, Eric Tennyson, who's sitting up on the dais over here. We don't really get along. We were raised separately with same mom and dad in the same house, but you know, he's mom's favorite, so that's the way it goes. I appreciate all the support. I'm glad you guys are here, and I look forward to serving Camerio for another year. So, thank you very much. And at this point, we're going to take a quick break to take some quick photos, and then we'll get on with the council agenda.
Wait, we have the library and the sanitary first.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We got excited.
I got excited. Martita was kicking me, so. City clerk, your turn.
Okay, this is the time for the reorganization of the Camerio Library Board, and we're going to begin with the nominations for the Office of President. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate Susan Santangelo. Second.
Okay, and I'm going to do a roll call vote for that. Now, Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, closes nominations for that, and we're going to go on to the President pro tem. Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Tremblay.
I'll second.
Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote on that. Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Okay, now that closes nomination floor.
And now, Madam Clerk, the Camerio Sanitary District.
Okay, for the reorganization, reorganization of the Camerio Sanitary District, we're going to start with the Office of Chair for the, for the Chair of the Sanitary District.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Kevin Kildie.
And is there a second for that?
I'll second.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Tremblay.
And is there a second for that one?
Oh. I'll second it just.
Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call vote in order of those nominations that were presented. The first one was for the nomination for Kevin Kildie. I'm going to do the roll call vote. Martita, I mean, Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo?
No.
Okay, and Mayor Tennyson?
No.
Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Tremblay?
No.
And Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
All right. Well, that failed for lack of the majority vote on that one, so we're going to do the second nomination for Tremblay for the Chair. So, did that roll call for that, and that's going to be Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
And Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to be, Tremblay is now the Chair. So now we're going to do the roll call vote for the Secretary for the Sanitary District.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Kevin Kildie.
Second.
Okay. And the roll call vote, Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Mayor Tennyson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremblay?
Yes.
And Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
And that closes the nomination for the Secretary. And that comes back to you.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll adopt it. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on any items not on the agenda? You know what? I'm going to take a quick pause. I'm sorry. We're going to do quick photos with the Vice Mayor first and her family members present.
Can I just request a break, like a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back?
Yes.
We'll do that?
We will recess for 10 minutes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on any item not on the agenda?
We do have some speakers on under general public comments. I have 12 names that signed up. I'm gonna just go over the brief rules. You do have three minutes to speak. When I call your name, you're gonna come up to the podium. You're gonna see up in the video on the screen up here, you'll see yourself with a little timer in the box who get three minutes. When the three minutes are up, you'll know because the microphone will no longer be active. And I'm gonna call some other people that'll be lined up behind just so we can know who's gonna be coming up next. So the first person we're gonna have is Joseph Doblinsky. After Joseph will be Angel Marie Taylor and then Larry, forgive me, Potcham. Potcham. So come on up, Joseph.
My name is Joseph Dobzinski Jr. and I'm a resident of Camarillo. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the 1,109 individuals abducted by ICE this year within San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties. Less than 30% have criminal records and even fewer for violent crime. But all have been targeted by ICE's brutal enforcement regime and denied due process. It's not an immigration reform issue nor ICE simply doing a job, but it's become a public safety issue for everyone. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the 666 individuals abducted by ICE within Ventura County, roughly 60.1% of the tri-county total. A population systematically abandoned by the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, who has chosen to voluntarily cooperate with ICE, has swallowed their lies and has refused to listen to their constituents at the Truth Act Forum where Sheriff Freihoff left in a huff after throwing a tantrum. Which isn't surprising, given that Sheriff Freihoff spoke at a memorial for Charlie Kirk, a man who has spewed hateful things about immigrants, migrants, the indigenous, and anyone who is not a white Christian man. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the 406 individuals abducted by ICE within Camarillo, or roughly 36.6% of the tri-county total. A population systematically abandoned by the city of Camarillo, its city council, and the Camarillo Police Department. Whose only support has been a video where Sheriff Freihoff states that ICE agents only act when they have probable cause and warrants, which has been shown to be patently false in the past few months, just as we have been saying since June. Oh sure, there's the measly 70K sent to food share to be shared among all Camarillo residents, a paltry amount compared to spending roughly seven times that amount to pay off one outgoing white male employee. Or less than 0.22% of what we shovel to the Camarillo Police Department. If budgets measure priorities, clearly food security ranks way lower than public safety. Instead of acknowledging this terror and the fear this city brings to immigrants now, this city council has explained it away. Glass house numbers don't count because they are outside the city limits. The abductions at 321 Cortez Circle are, quote, "just the way it is," unquote. While other cities have given and given generously, Camarillo has done next to nothing despite having the most abductions of any city in three counties, and it's not even close. Then again, some of you praise Charlie Kirk as well, so maybe it does make sense that next to nothing has been done. Even worse, the Camarillo Police Department has held ICE agents to a special standard. For the last two weeks, I've been reporting vehicles seen going in and out of 321 Cortez Circle with illegal modifications, copying this entire council, and I only received two responses. Volunteers and protesters with the same illegal modifications recited with four to five officers' presence, whereas volunteers and protesters haven't heard a peep about these reports. And that's because the police will always come out to defend ICE from the public, but they'll never come out to defend the public from ICE. One day, the world will look back on the inaction of this council in law enforcement, and there will be a political and social reckoning. None of the flowery speeches or justifications made will seem even remotely adequate. I hope you can all live with this on your conscience. In the meantime, we'll be organizing everybody else in Camarillo that hasn't sold their soul to an obviously broken system. Solo el pueblo, salva el pueblo.
Thank you.
Okay, so Angel Marie, and then after Angel Marie will be Larry, and then after Larry will be Blanca.
Good evening, council members. My name is Angel Marie Taylor. I'm a college student at Cal State Channel Islands here in Camarillo, and I'm here with 805 Rapid Response Network, Metta, and Liberation Education. On July 9th, one day before the headlined Glass House ICE raid, I opened up to this council about my background and struggles in good faith that you'd take it seriously enough to act. I spoke about being a Camarillo resident for over 10 years, going from being a student at Cape Middle School just down the road, and stayed local to attend the only state university in the county, also just down the road. I spoke about how, living in Camarillo, it's not uncommon for me to be the only black person in the room. It's not uncommon for me to be the only person in the room with deported family members. While that does come with real social barriers, more important than that, I spoke about how the immigrant community, my family, needs help. I spoke about how my grandparents and my mother were kidnapped and deported with no criminal background. I spoke about how my aunt, a U.S. citizen, was also kidnapped and deported with no criminal background. I spoke about how unjust, harmful, and broken this system is and that your infrastructure is. I spoke about the continued harm and state sanctioned terrorism that you are enabling in this community. I spoke about Camarillo being a place of community and that you, as our elected officials, must take action, real action, to keep your community safe. Despite all that I spoke to, that we spoke to on July 9th, your chambers have been lethally silent. The next day, I watched my professor, Dr. Jonathan Caravello, my friend and family member, U.S. citizen with no criminal background, kidnapped and disappeared at the Glass House ICE raid. Not arrested, kidnapped, and disappeared by ICE agents. The Glass House ICE raid, two minutes away from my campus, I will not call a protest because that's not what it was. What happened that day was hundreds of community members, your community members, showing up with nothing but the clothes on our backs to witness and document the violations, kidnappings, and murder because you refused to take action. On that note, we also witnessed your police help these state sanctioned terrorists commit the crimes on our people. We saw it with our own eyes in case the dozens of video footages out there isn't convincing enough. How can it be that five months later, here we are again, speaking truth to power and demanding that this council take action? How can that be? You have failed this community. Dare I even still call Camarillo that? The absolute bare minimum that you can all do to keep us safe from this fascist society is match the efforts of neighboring cities in Ventura County.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's up.
Okay, Larry Potcham. No, thank you. And then after Larry will be Blanca, and after Blanca will be Spencer.
My name is Larry Potcham. I'm from Thousand Oaks. The undocumented in Ventura County are a significant part of our economic growth of our region, which I'll briefly detail for you. They contribute $3.3 billion annually to the Ventura County GDP, over 10% of the county total, according to Jamshed Demouy, professor of economics at Cal Lutheran University. Through all their economic activity, each employee generates about 45K in total tax revenues for various government levels and services. They contribute about $175 million of Social Security, and their employees add another $157 million, none of which these undocumented ever receive because they're ineligible for Social Security. As we lose workers to ICE raids, we're undergoing an economic and business impact which is starting to be felt and will grow over the next few years. But beyond the economic impact, please consider the effect of breaking up families with long histories here on the wives and children of those left behind. Over 78% of the undocumented in Ventura County have been in the U.S. for over 10 years, and 30% have been here for more than 20. Approximately 32% of the Hispanic or Latino children live with undocumented parents. Many of these students are afraid to go to school, which is dimming their future prospects. And since less than 5% of those arrested have violent criminal records, what's the benefit of these arrests? What's the point? It's hurting families and the economy. When I deliver food to these affected families, they're afraid to answer the door because they don't know who I am. Fear has taken over this country for many minorities, as I'm sure you know. I encourage this city council to consider all the possible family implications of ICE terrorizing this community, and to consider all the options you have to slow or stop these raids and help the victims. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Blanca, and then after Blanca will be Spencer, and then Joseph Metcalf.
It's a holiday season, the time of lights, wreaths, and cheerful slogans. Peace on earth, goodwill to all, except apparently here. Because while cities everywhere hang ornaments, Camarillo hangs a distinction, a national reputation. When people across this country hear the name Camarillo, they don't think of sunshine or quiet neighborhoods. They think of one of the largest immigration raids in modern history. They think of the glasshouse, of buses, of helicopters, of children coming home to empty houses. Yesterday, one of our community members testified before Congress recounting what happened to him here in Camarillo during the Glass House raid. This is how Camarillo has come to be known by the world. Camarillo is also known as the home of the hole, an ICE office, a place of cages dressed up as an administrative building, a center not of community but of trauma, fear, and destruction. What a legacy to wrap up and put under the tree. Now, let me be clear. I know this council cannot change federal law. I know who to call, and yes, I've called them. But knowing what you can't do does not excuse ignoring what you can do. A recent report from California Lutheran University makes this very plain. ICE raids don't just devastate families, they destabilize entire regions. They shrink the workforce, they reduce GDP, and they cost millions in lost wages and tax revenue. The harm is real, the data is real, and the damage compounds over time. Undocumented workers are not a drain in our economy, they are integral to it. When they are ripped from our community, everyone pays the price. You can speak, you can condemn harm, you can pass resolutions, you can fund resources, you can show up publicly for the people who live here, not just for the ones who feel safe. Silence is also a choice, and this year, silence has been loud. It's ironic, really, we celebrate family during the holidays while families here are being torn apart. We preach about community values while entire communities are left to fend for themselves. We talk about safety while fear becomes a permanent resident. Camarillo does not get to pretend this is happening somewhere else. This isn't abstract, this isn't hypothetical, this is here, this is now, and this is us. So while cocoa's being poured and pleasantries are exchanged, remember that some families are counting holidays by absence, by empty chairs, by silence where laughter used to live. Council members, you may not control federal law, but you do control what this city stands for.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Spencer Ritchie, and after Spencer will be Joseph Metcalf, and then it will be David Gilbertson.
Hello. So I noticed that, you know, when the mayor position was, you know, being handed off from Kildee to Tennyson, and also when the vice mayor position was being handed from Tennyson to Dr. Martinez Bravo, which, by the way, like considering how Camarillo City Council works, I don't, I mean, considering that it's still the same five people in the city council, and the mayor doesn't, you know, it's not, I guess, as huge a position as it is to, like, other cities to my knowledge. I, like, this isn't any kind of, like, you know, really big refreshment or anything. And also, I noticed, like, you know, during all the, like, all the glowing speeches about, you know, how great Kildee was as our mayor this year, and I'm like, that's a lot, that was a lot of just ignoring and blatantly ignoring the white elephant in the room, which is just, you know, letting ICE agents run our city into the ground by kidnapping Camerians and people, and, you know, other locals who work in Camarillo, of course. But yeah, Camerians, left and right, and, which is, you know, destroying our economy, spreading fear, you know, making sure, you know, federal agents of all kinds are extra comfortable in our city, so when they start targeting more and more people, you know, they can feel comfortable that, you know, our, you know, that our Camarillo will let them do it. At least, Camarillo City Government will let them do it. And, and, yeah. And, you know, as for the whole Glass House, ew, it's not in, it's not in the city of Camarillo, it doesn't, it's not incorporated to the city of Camarillo. But, like, well, it kind of reminds me, you know, especially considering how much your, like, you know, your father, Councilman Kildee, was glazed during the ceremonies, simply, you know, that were on paper honoring you. Camarillo State Hospital wasn't in, wasn't considered to be part of Camarillo during its existence either, I don't think. And yet, the place still had Camarillo's name on it, so for the longest time, it was what Camarillo was known for. Ditto with the Glass House raid, because guess what? That place is a Camarillo address. So that's gonna be what Camarillo is known for. And, yeah, really, overall, you should be embarrassed that this was what your mayorship was like this year, Councilmember Kildee. Adios.
Thank you, Spencer.
Okay, next is Joseph Metcalf, and then David Gilbertson, and after David will be Shannon Anderson.
Good evening. I know tensions are running very high in here, but I just want to be here for a slightly different purpose today, and if we can just focus a little bit on the spirit of the season. My name is Joseph Metcalf. I am the co-founder and the conductor of the Simi Valley Symphony Orchestra. We are bringing a brand-new Christmas show to the city of Camarillo, and we just wanted just to share a little bit about what our experience has been with the city as we've been received here. So the event is gonna be taking place on December the 21st, it's the last Sunday before Christmas, at the Rancho Capana Performing Arts Center. And I want to say that our experience here has been absolutely tremendous. We've been welcomed by such professionalism. Great shopkeepers have welcomed us in, invited us in to talk about what we're doing with their customers. We've been, had nothing but an incredibly fantastic experience with the city of Camarillo, and it really compelled us to come along here today and just say thank you very much. Thank you for, because what goes on in the city is also indicative of its leadership, of the quality of the leaders that allow people to also be able to do things, like know where there's difficult things that are happening, there's also life that also goes on for everybody else. And we can see how businesses are being supported here, we can see how, you know, businesses want to even get involved with this. We have Rolling Penn Donuts who've gotten involved behind this, Xander's Game House, you know, have gotten behind this because they understand the value in the community of the arts. We also want to say that, obviously, this is historic. These weren't just decisions that were made by this board to build such an incredible performing arts center that's available for the community. And I just want to say, on behalf of being your neighbors in Simi Valley, this has been an amazing opportunity to come here and hopefully start a tradition that will carry on for many years to come. So we're saying this to you on behalf of our organization, but saying that to you because you represent the city of Camarillo. So thank you very much, thank you for all you bring, very proud to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf.
Okay, so David Gilbertson, after David Gilbertson will be Shannon Anderson, and after Shannon will be Bev Dransfeld.
Good evening. My name is David Gilbertson. I live in Camarillo. Thank you, council members, for your public service. Congratulations, Mayor Kildee, and welcome, Mayor Tennyson. I actually was here to talk about climate action, but I agree with these folks, having worked in the city of Seattle and having issues with Customs and Border Enforcement and ICE, their actions are outrageous, dangerous, and unacceptable. Bold leadership is needed to restore public trust in our law enforcement. Congratulations, we have a climate action plan. Now, the job of the council and the city staff are funding it. I thank the city staff for their hard work and Rincon Consultants for development of the climate action plan. It's pretty comprehensive and robust. You're working on your funding for the next year and into the future. I hope you take a long-range look at all that's required to implement the a long-range look at all that's required to implement the climate action plan. One of the things that might help is easy access to understanding the city's climate action plan and getting it on the front page of the website instead of bury deep into the climate action plan is just not easily acceptable, so I hope we'll take a look at that. I hope we'll work really closely because this is a regional issue for our Ventura County, which is one of the fastest-warming counties in the lower 48 states. So here's a headline that just recently came up. Deserted Oil Wells Haunt Los Angeles: Toxic Fumes and Enormous Cleanup Costs. If the state were tackle, were to tackle the cleanup, it would cost tens of millions of dollars. It's time to ship the cost where it should have been all along to those who created the problem. I think a climate action would be required for fossil fuel phase-out. In addition, Polluters Pay Climate Superfund legislation puts the responsibility for paying for the costs of pollution where it belongs with the fossil fuel industry. I have six grandchildren, I saw your grandchildren here this evening and your family. I think the question is, what action can we ensure that they have a bright and rewarding and beneficial future, and not doing action is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbertson.
Okay, so Shannon Anderson, and after Shannon will be Bev Dransfeld, and after Bev will be, forgive my pronunciation, it's Sidharts Murota.
Buenas tardes, Alcalde Tennyson, miembros del council y personal. Mi nombre es Shannon Anderson y soy voluntaria con 805 Respuesta Rápida, donde creemos que solo el pueblo salva al pueblo. Si ve a agentes de ICE o conoce a alguien afectados por ellos, llame o envíe un mensaje de texto a nuestra línea directa a 805-870-8855. Puede enviar la palabra alertas por mensaje de texto a ese número para recibir informes verificados sobre la ubicación de ICE. También puede seguirnos en las redes sociales de 805Respuesta Rápida para obtener actualizaciones. Si desea unirse a nosotros, esté atento a las capacitaciones para voluntarios que se realizarán a principios de próximo año. Gracias. Good evening, Mayor Tennyson, council members and staff. My name is Shannon Anderson, and I'm a volunteer with 805 Rapid Response, where we believe that solo el pueblo salva al pueblo. If you see ICE or know anyone impacted by ICE, you can call our hotline or text us at 805-870-8855. You can receive text message alerts by texting the number ALERTAS to our hotline to receive reports of ICE's location. You can also follow us on social media at 805Respuesta Rápida for updates. If you would like to join us to keep an eye out, please keep an eye out for volunteer trainings coming up in the new year. Thank you.
Five months ago, 351 people were taken in Camrio. On September 16th, a Camrio resident was taken in front of City Hall. While I refuse to acknowledge the July 10th raid as happening in Camrio, since it's an unincorporated part of Camrio, in front of City Hall is as close to the city as it gets. Please, I urge you to stop turning away from this. I again request, at the bare minimum, of establishing a committee to have the conversation with the community, such as the, just as the city of Oxnard and Santa Paula have. We are asking, we are pleading, for an opportunity to help solve these problems. We have come time and time again with potential solutions. We know your jurisdiction is limited, and there are still ways to help. I value my relationship with each of you, and that is what makes all of this that much harder. That's actually some of the greatest turmoil that I hold, the restraint it takes me to not be up here screaming, crying, and slamming my hands against this podium, because you have seen but an ounce of my rage, of my distress, my utter disappointment. I say all of this with the heaviest heart, time and time again. What I value most, though, is this community and doing what is right. I have another close friend on another council, I know I would be speaking up on a matter coming before them, without skipping a beat, they said, "Doing what's right comes first, friendship comes after." To this day, I'm overwhelmed by those words, because they understood what it means to be a real leader, putting the community's needs above all else. I'll share one more experience that I shared back in August at the Keeping Families Together rally. I was reading to my daughter before bedtime when we heard a scratching noise. She asked, "What if it's someone trying to get in, like one of Donald Trump's people?" I asked her, "Why are you scared of that?" She buried her head and said, "I'm scared that they'll kidnap me, and I'll never see you again." I choked. I asked her if that's something she's heard. She said, "No, I just think that." She's seven. Her monsters don't live under her bed, they live at 321 Cortez Circle, less than 10 minutes from here, here in Camrio, the epicenter of ICE terror in the tri-counties. When you see her on Saturday at the parade, I hope you remember the story. I come with my lived experience, because all the facts and figures have not moved you into meaningful action. I leave you with a gift this holiday season, that the families from Laguna Road, from those who have disappeared or left with shattered glass, so that you have something tangible to carry beyond our pleas and tears. The glass is actually from the person that was taken on September 16th, the glass that was left on the parking lot.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to pronounce this again, it's Sidharts, Sidhart, and, okay, and after that speaker will be Anita V., you can go ahead and go up to the, and then it will be
Mayor, council, fellow citizens, let me begin saying I quite agree with everything said up to this point by my friends in orange, by Mr. Gilbertson, and yes, even Mr. Metcalf, even though that's to another purpose. I see in this, there are three great shames in the city this year. In the first, it is a great shame to make people wait 30 years, I've had this as in person, for their citizenship, and then punish them for having to wait. It is an equal shame, we have waited not 30, but 50 years to address the issue raised by Mr. Gilbertson, that is, of pollution and its effects on us all. And third, third, it is the greatest shame, perhaps, that all of us have learned to mind our own business and ignore these matters. Beyond that, I can only second what everyone else has said so far. I too was at Glass House, I too have lived in this city most of my life, I too know whereof I speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Anita V., and then Abra Stewart, and then Melissa Munoz.
I'm here as a resident of the city.
Pull the mic down, ma'am, 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 pull the mic down closer to your mouth.
I'm here as a resident of the city and because our community is watching how cities across Ventura County choose to respond to the needs of immigrant families, families who are workers, taxpayers, caregivers, and neighbors. They are the backbone of our local economy. When these families are destabilized, the ripple effects are costly on an economic, social, and human level. Across the county, neighboring cities are stepping up. Thousand Oaks approved $100,000 for the Ventura County Community Foundation's Neighbor Support Fund unanimously. They recognize that protecting families is also protecting the stability and productivity of their city. Ventura went even further, contributing $175,000 to the Neighbors Fund. Their council made it clear that protecting vulnerable residents is a priority. They chose compassion paired with practical governance. Port Juaniemi issued a formal letter of support. Santa Paula approved $50,000 towards the Neighbors Fund and created a Committee on Immigration. Since 2017, Oxnard has had a longstanding Safe City Resolution. Just three weeks ago, Oxnard City Council members committed to providing $600,000 for one additional Ventura County Public Defender Attorney position for over a three-year period. Both Santa Paula and Oxnard joined the lawsuit against California immigration raids. They made a clear statement, their residents deserve protection and dignity. These cities didn't act out of politics, they acted out of responsibility. They saw families facing real fear and decided their role was to help, not to look away. What about Camrio? Camrio prides itself on being compassionate, community-driven, and forward-thinking, but right now, your actions don't reflect that reputation or the city's motto of las personas son la ciudad. Camrio is listed as a coalition partner for the Neighbor Support Fund, but when it came time to take meaningful, measurable action, you declined to contribute. Every neighboring city that stood up and contributed did so because they understand that doing nothing has a cost. Children go without support, employers lose workers, and entire neighborhoods suffer, families torn apart. This isn't about matching another city's dollar amount, it's about showing that Camrio believes in dignity, family unity, and fairness. It's about understanding that immigration households are not outsiders, they are integral members of our community. Let's not forget, in this county and across this country, US citizens are being kidnapped and detained too, simply for the color of their skin or for standing with immigrants. I'm asking you respectfully but urgently to reconsider. Choose action over hesitation, join the cities that have already demonstrated leadership, choose compassion grounded in data and humanity, show our immigrant residents, many of whom are too afraid to stand at this podium, that Camrio sees them, values them, and understands their essential role in our community. You have an opportunity to lead, or you can be remembered as a city that did absolutely nothing when others rose to that occasion. A quick note, although this person is not sitting up on that dais, I've watched him attend every city council meeting since June, he was here on July 9th asking you to take action and protect our immigrant community. That was the day before the glass house raids. He continues to show up, speak up, and look out for the vulnerable in our community. So thank you, Joseph Dobzinski, for going above and beyond.
Thank you.
Okay, so Abra Stewart, and then Melissa Munoz, and then there'll be Danae Lassen.
Hello, good evening, Honorable City Council Members, Mayor Tennyson, Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo, congratulations. I don't have any formal comments prepared today, so I'm just going to speak from the heart, but my name is Abra Stewart, I'm the program manager at SeaFrog, or Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, we're a local nonprofit organization working on a just transition away from fossil fuels to protect our health, economy, and climate, and in that process, protecting our frontline community members, and also the workers who historically have relied on those jobs from the oil and gas industry. I, a big part of my work at SeaFrog is I have the pleasure to work with our youth, our high school and college-age students, and I have a couple of them here with me today, so they'll talk to you too, but teaching them on how to get civically engaged in processes related to issues that they care about. And for the last year, I think, first time we met with a city council member about this issue was in December of 2024, so we've been working on this for a long time, and recently, a resolution in support of a fossil fuel phase-out made its way through the policy committee, which we're super grateful to all of the policy committee members and staff, and also knowing that there's in there support for the Polluter Pays Climate Superfund, which holds fossil fuel companies financially accountable for the climate damages they've caused, releasing the burden from taxpayers and city budgets that otherwise have to make those, make up for those costs. We saw that with the massive amounts of money that the mountain fire caused here in Camrio just last year. So today, I'm here to ask you that, or to express my gratitude for pushing that resolution forward, and also ask that you all consider adding general support for the Polluter Pays Climate Superfund. I know there's some difficulty with bill numbers and all that, but I think having a statement that expresses support generally for the idea of a superfund for climate damages would be really beneficial. I want to highlight that just yesterday, the County of Santa Barbara, the Board of Supervisors, passed a resolution in support of this legislation, more locally here, Cam, or, that's where we are now, Oxnard City Council, and the Port of Juaniemi City Council have also expressed their support for this. And I know that you all set a goal this last year of really listening to youth and young people in your community, and I just urge you to continue doing that, and also thank you for how you have done that. Previously, I myself got involved in climate work when I was a high school student in Ventura County, left, went to college at UC Berkeley, came back to serve my community because this is where I love to be, and really an honor to see other young people working towards this as well, and I know how great they can become when they have strong leadership that supports their work. So thank you so much for your time, appreciate you all, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay, so Melissa Munoz, and then Danae, is it Danae, Danae Lassen, and then Dries
Good afternoon, City Council Members. My name is Melissa Munoz, I'm a student at Oxnard College, and I'm also a youth leader with Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas. And I'd just like, just like to say thank you for pushing this resolution through and working continuously with youth and with SeaFrog overall. We really do appreciate your support, and we would just like to see language of the Polluters Pay Superfund Act 2025 be included in the resolution and legislation language, and really make, to really make a true impact by pushing this through and support the superfund and action we're taking on this. Thank you.
And after, how do you say, it's a Danae? Danae, and after Danae will be Dries, Dries Berger, and that's the last person I have signed up.
Okay, thank you. My name is Danae Lassen, you guys have seen me many times, I've been up here, you probably recognize my name, our family's been around here for a long time. I'm a volunteer with 805 Endocifun and the Rapid Response Network, and I used to feel really proud of being a citizen of Camrio, I've been here since I was a child, and although it's been pretty white and bland, we built a Cracker Barrel from scratch, which, I don't know, that just really bothers me for some reason, but I felt safe inside of this community, and I no longer feel that. I don't feel that the council listens to us, our, your constituents, I no longer feel that the council cares for anyone outside of a very specific cookie cutter person that lives within 93010 or 93012. To be a true leader, you have to think outside of the box. We have provided many tangible and feasible options for this council over the last few months to help with the dangers of ICE in our community. Not only were they not really taken seriously, but instead, you frequently pivoted to something unrelated. I know you think, Mayor Tennyson, the glass house was technically unrelated or unincorporated and that your hands are clean, but they are not. As Blanca said, the world cites Camrio as the location of the glass house raid, and your silence is being talked about worldwide as well. You choose to leave, you chose to leave tens of thousands of dollars in a matched grant for fear of helping someone who didn't look and live like you. Your distraction of if land is incorporated or unincorporated has shown how shallow your concerns are for we, the people. You may have started thinking back in June that we were just a group of radical young people who would burn out, but I assure you, as you have seen over the months, that there are people of all demographics, ages, religions, and zip codes who care about the vulnerable community as more than what you have shown, and we're not going anywhere. We're not going to be quiet, we are watching everything you do, every failure as your neighboring cities are stepping up, and we're taking notes because you no longer have our trust.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dries Forgier, I'm a high school student here in Ventura County, and I'm with the wonderful folks from SeaFrog, and I just want to share some small little words. First, thanks so much for pushing through the policy committee, our resolution concerning the oil and gas well safety setbacks. However, I do want to kindly request and really urge the council to consider adding some language that includes support of the Climate Superfund as it pertains to state legislation, even if it's just general support, that would really be appreciated. Just, again, as Abra said, these types of resolution statements of support have been passed in Santa Barbara, Oxnard, Port Juaniemi, and you would be joining a great club in adding that resolution, adding that language to the resolution. adding that resolution, adding that language to the resolution. Also, just want to emphasize the need of local support, whoa, sorry, local support, especially as it pertains to the Climate Superfund, and how that's kind of sending a chain to the state to really signal that this is something that constituents want to see, and that it will help communities like yours that has been affected by the mountain fire, and like so many across Ventura that have been devastated by natural disasters by providing resources to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have under general public comment for anything that is not on the agenda.
Thank you. We will move on to the next agenda item. Just a quick talk, the Friends of the Library has been in existence for over 50 years. A nonprofit organization incorporated in 1974, they have provided unwavering financial support to our library. They have about 900 members and 100 annual volunteers that operate out of the Camarillo Library Bookstore at 4101 Las Pocas Road, which is open five days a week. Their efforts have contributed over $3 million toward books, materials, and programming support for our library. Tonight, the Friends of Camarillo Library are here to present their annual donation to the city council. Their year's contribution totals $134,000, continuing their incredible legacy of support. At this time, I'd like to invite the representatives from the Friends of the Camarillo Library Well, thank you very much, it's much appreciated, you guys have done tremendous yeoman's work in supporting our library and the services provided there. Who would like to speak on behalf of the Friends of the Library?
Hi, I'm the President of the Board, Jolene Warren, and I would like to just do some thank yous. I'd like to thank all 87 volunteers who this past year donated almost 15,000 hours of their time. And I would like to thank Mandy, and Lisa, and the staff of the library, because they have come up with the most amazing programs, which we also support. And I would like to thank the community for supporting us and allowing us to support the library.
Everybody, Mandy, come up here. On behalf of council, thank you very much for all the hard work and the tremendous support you've given to one of the most fantastic public libraries in the world. So, thank you very much. And if you just hold on a minute, any council members, starting with Vice Mayor Martinez Bravo.
As always, thank you so much for all the support that you provide to our community. It's always been such a pleasure going into the library and, and going in, especially when I had my kids, when they were much younger, and, you know, making it such a fun time. And it's really such a great asset for our community, and none of this could happen without all of the dedication and all of the time that you put into it. So, thank you for truly setting an example into who we are as a city and contributing in this way. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kildee, anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. You know, it's truly amazing, in the age of digital and everything else that we're dealing with, the, you know, the, probably some good, but it's also really challenging for brick and mortars and paperback books and magazines and newspapers and all that, and to give 134,000 is truly remarkable in this day and age. And I want to thank all of you volunteers here, and the volunteers that weren't able to make it tonight, give them our heartfelt, felt, thank you for what you do, and it's a great organization. If you have any books, which I think most of us do, I certainly do, go down there and donate them then, and it really goes to good cause. So again, thanks for your efforts, it does not go unnoticed.
Councilmember Trembley, anything?
Just briefly, when I go into the Friends of the Library Bookstore to buy books, which I do often, one of the things I'm most impressed about are the number of volunteers who are there, and the number of folks who are there consistently. And when you cited 15,000 hours, that is an astonishing number, but it's not surprising, given the level of dedication that I see by all of your 86, 87 volunteers. So, hats off to you, thank you so much for what you do for our library and for our community, it's deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Santangelo.
You know, since we reorganized, I like to think this, of this as the beginning of the term, and I always love that we get to start it off with this, because it's such a remarkable organization, and it supports such a remarkable library. And so, thank you, I've already, I can't really add to what my colleagues have said, but 15,000 hours is really remarkable. Thank you very much, thank you for all your work and all your time, appreciate it.
And I would just like to add very quickly, the volunteer hours are remarkable. We have so many volunteer organizations in Camarillo, and Camarillo wouldn't be what it is without all of the volunteers willing to step up and give of their own time and talent. And thank you very much, we appreciate you. And with that, we will move on to the Consent Calendar Items J through A D.
Before that would be the council comments.
Oh, you know what, I'm learning. We're going to start at the opposite end with Councilmember Santangelo this time.
All righty then. Okay, for meetings attended, on November 20th was the Policy Committee, also November 20th was CPA Executive Committee. Backing up to November 19th, we had the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ad Hoc Committee. Also, on November 19th, I got to help out at the Boys and Girls Club Thanksgiving Feast. November, and then to December 4th, CPA Board of Directors Meeting, and December 5th, the Employee Recognition Dinner, which was wonderful. Thank you so much for the city staff that helped put on a really nice evening and a really wonderful way to thank our staff and thank all of the city employees for the hard work they do every day. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Trembley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. On November 13, a meeting of the Camarillo Airport Authority. On November 14, Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency Board of Directors Meeting. On November 19th, the Council's Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, and a meeting of the CASA, California Association of Sanitation Agencies Board of Directors. On November 20, a meeting with Metrolinx Auditor, and I think I collected, November 19 was the Boys and Girls Club Dinner Feast for the kids, and that was fun. I think I got to serve honey butter at that, and then I turned it over to Councilmember Martinez Bravo, and I think I graduated to rolls. There you go. But, you know, we interchanged and worked together as a team. On, from December 2 through 4, I attended the conference, the Association of California Water Agencies in San Diego. On December 5, the City Employee Recognition Dinner, and ditto to what Susan said, thank you to our city employees, and thank you to the folks who organized the dinner. On December 6, the Habitat for Humanity Dedication, and the Livingston Light Up Life Celebration here in our park. And then I also had the privilege to present a 100th birthday certificate of recognition to Mr. Bernie Barnes, a longtime resident of Leisure Village, who is not in Leisure Village anymore, but he is, he is a wonderful gentleman, a World War II Navy veteran. We don't have many left, unfortunately, of World War II Navy veterans, and a businessman, and inventor, and a wonderful guy. So, Bernie, I doubt you're watching, but a happy birthday again for your 100th birthday. For the Aqua Conference, briefly, there were four main topics that, that I listened to and participated in. First was from the Chief Executive Officer for the Western Growers Association discussing state water policy as it, as it impacts agriculture. Secondly, on PFAS and the continuing regulatory and litigation status for PFAS. Third, on infrastructure financing, and the fourth on funding efforts toward SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And that's it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kildee.
All right. On Wednesday, November 19th, I also attended the Boys and Girls Club Camarillo Annual Thanksgiving Feast, and I did something really important, I passed out the napkins and the knives and the forks. And that was, you know, did all right with that. Great organization, you get a point, a chance to go down there, do it, it's just, does some really great work, or better than all the staff. Thursday, December 4th, we had a VRSD meeting I attended. Saturday, December 6th, I attended the Vista Campanero Dedication Ceremony for Habitat for Humanity, and what a great project, and I'm just really, really encouraged and hopeful that we can do more of that in the city. Rental and homeownership, which all this council has really supported here, just a wonderful, wonderful thing to do, and hopefully, again, we're going to really put our best foot forward and do, do more of that. Saturday, December 6th, I went to the commemorated Air Force Southern California Wing Annual Party, and they wanted me to say a few words there, so I attended that. Monday, December 8th, I attended the Finance Committee Meeting. Ditto for December 5th, our Employees Dinner. Honor and a privilege to work with our employees, absolutely an honor. December, Tuesday, December 9th, along with now Mayor Tennyson, we attended the City of Camarillo Annual Reorganization for outgoing Mayor David Newman, and did a wonderful job for the City of Thousand Oaks. And again, thank you, everyone, for your kind comments, and we're going to have a really good year, this year, we're in, we're in really, really good hands. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Kildee. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. November 18th, I attended the Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee. November 19th, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Thanksgiving Feast Volunteer Dinner. And those of you who may know me know that I love taking photos. And unfortunately, I was a little late, and I was unable to get a photo with the whole group, David Tennyson had just left, but nevertheless, I was able to attend, and it was really a wonderful event. November 20th, I attended the Ventura County Animal Services Meeting. Just so you're aware, in terms of some of the data, there are 604 stray animals who have entered VCAS in the last six weeks. And their executive director, Esteban Rodriguez, has done an amazing job at just updating the community on what is going on. He has also reached out to try to partner with other nonprofits to see how we can continue to attend to this issue. Out of those 604 stray animals, 591 pets were adopted, 149 were reunited, and 56 were transferred to rescue partners, for a total of 796 animals that were safely leaving the shelter. So, very, very thankful for all of the work that's happening there. And then on November 20th, I attended the West Ventura County Business Alliance Lunch Series with Mr. George Winkler, who's one of our staff members. It was actually a presentation featuring Dr. Demui, and Dr., Dr. Demui is from Cal Lutheran University, and Dr. David Vera is from CSUCI. And Dr. Demui presented detailed findings on the economic role of undocumented immigrants in Ventura County, noting that they directly contribute 3.3 billion to the county's GDP, and 5.1 billion in total economic output when indirect and induced effects are included. He also emphasized that policy changes involving deportation would pose substantial economic risks for the region, with projected losses of more than $166 million in GDP, and 440 jobs for every 1,000 undocumented workers removed from the county. So, we definitely know that there is an economic impact that is being felt and will continue to be felt here. When this item was agendized on the impact of immigration, in addition to every council member speaking up on the topic, the City of Camarillo contributed $70,000 to address food insecurity through Food Share, and this support extends not only to the city, but to anyone in need, including the farmworkers living in Somas Ranch and CSUCI students. In addition, next week, on December 17th, there will be a nonprofit workshop. The city continues to invest in the nonprofit sector, providing hundreds of thousands of dollars to nonprofit organizations that are providing a service right here in our community. So, I'm very, very thankful that our council has prioritized this, and, and nonprofits who are providing the service can continue to receive the support, the application process and information is online, and that workshop is on the 17th, I believe, of December. And given that there continues to be a need to support people who are facing food insecurity, we will be partnering with Food Share on an emergency food drive. And this will be a drive right here in our city on Friday, December 19th, from 10:00 to 2:00. So, it's your opportunity to give back, and we will continue to support our community in this way. And then, and that will be up in the front, so you can just drive by and drop off your items and go. December 1st, I also attended the CSUCI Site Authority Close Session and Regular Meeting, and on December 5th, I also attended the Employee Recognition Dinner, and just super grateful to all of our staff who just are amazing human beings and work so hard to maintain our city. December 8th, I attended the Finance Committee Meeting, and also December 8th, I attended the General Plan Update Stakeholder Interview. And I know because of the Brown Act, we cannot respond to issues that are brought up that are not on the agenda, but I have always been open to meeting anyone in our community. And I think you all have my contact and information, but just know that I am open for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
On November 13th, I attended the Ventura Council of Governments Meeting. On the 18th, Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee. On the 19th, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. On the 20th, the Policy Committee. On the 20th, the VCOG Admin Committee. On December 6th, or actually, December 2nd through the 4th, I also attended the Association of California Water Agencies with Mr. Trembley. On the 6th, I attended the Habitat for Humanity at Vista Campanero, and I'm just going to add a couple of things. One young family got up and spoke, the wife spoke, she had her husband with her and her young son, and if you didn't get tears formed in your eyes, then you didn't have a heart. They have dreamed of a home, they've had to live separate with the mother and the son living in one family's room, and the husband living in another room. He additionally was going through cancer treatment, had chemo, and they were so touched and so moved when they got the keys to their own house, it was just remarkable. And the thing that, you know, I've known about Habitat Humanity, for Humanity forever, but each new homeowner puts in hundreds of hours of labor to help build their own home. So, it's not just giving them a key and letting them walk into a new place fully furnished, they put blood, sweat, and tears into their own home. She told the story that most people take for granted, sitting at your dining room table, having a meal as a family, and they have an experience. having a meal as a family, and they haven't experienced that. And now they get to experience that. And this was all started when the city bought the old stock lumber. And the city worked with many mansions and the area Housing Authority. And we have an absolute phenomenal complex out there. And kudos to Mr. Tremblay, who in the past said, not only should we have rentals, we should have the opportunity for ownership. And he was one of the major pushers in that. And seeing these eight happy families could do nothing during the holiday season, but make your heart warm and feel like these people deserved it, they worked for it. So I'm happy for that. I also had the opportunity, and I'm going to go back, on the 19th, all of us fed about 380 children at the Boys and Girls Club. And the Boys and Girls Club serves every single segment of Camrio. And if they can't afford the astronomical fees of $100 a year for after-school care, they get scholarships. These are 380 young kids that truly appreciated it. Now, Mr. Tremblay got to give out honey butter, and who doesn't love honey butter? I got to give out dressing and potatoes. And I was amazed that 40% of the kids didn't want dressing. They wanted potatoes and the gravy that was next to me. But it was just such an absolutely wonderful event. And the Boys and Girls Club is always looking for volunteers. So if you've got a little bit of extra time, reach out to Roberto Martinez, the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, and volunteer some of your time. I also attended the Light of Life, along with Councilmember Tremblay, and our Constitution Park with Livingston Memorial. Again, a very another touching tribute to families that have lost family members, of which all of us sitting up here have. So I was proud to be there with him, and I'm sure the other council members would have been there, but some of them have jobs and kids. And I just have grandkids and a wife, so I was able to do that. So thank you. And now, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the city clerk to make size 18 font and double-space all of my notes from now on, so I don't miss anything. So now, I believe, is the time that we will go to the Consent Calendar, Items J through AD. Do I have any council members?
I can move consent.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, now what?
Public comment.
Any, any public comments on the Consent Calendar?
And I do have two people who signed up. There's three minutes for, because this is a consent calendar, it's acted on in one action. I'll ask the city attorney to step in and.
Certainly, yes. The city clerk has indicated that an individual has asked to speak on several items that are on consent. The city's practice is that when the consent is being approved with just one motion, the individuals and the public will then get the one opportunity of three minutes to address all items on consent. So for people who have wanted to talk on both items, they'll need to cover that within their one three-minute timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, the first person is going to be Spencer Ritchie, and the second person will be Patrick Robinson. So Spencer, if you will come on up.
I, I forgot what, what agenda item we're on. Because oftentimes, like especially as I've, as I've attended multiple times this year, the city council has not gone through agenda items in the order that they've been printed on the, on the copy of the agenda that is given to meeting attendees, which, yeah, it, it, that doesn't make the, the city council meetings particularly accessible either. Because, like especially to, like to, you know, the younger people who, you know, aren't, who I think are a bit less likely to agree with, you know, the people who think it's perfectly okay for ICE to keep kidnapping Camarilloans and spreading terror throughout the land. Um, yeah, most people aren't that able to sit through, you know, people like you who, you know, generally appear to care more about honey butter than about ICE destroying our city.
Spencer, I'm going to interrupt you. Do you want to address any of the items on the Consent Calendar?
Okay. I keep forgetting the exact letters, but I did want to give additional public comments on... The big one is the whole city deciding whether to get the Monday.com software or not. And then the other two, like things I wanted to comment on were the adoption of the city council meeting schedule for 2026. And then the last thing I was going to, wanted to comment on was about the... I think it was the fiscal report. No, it was the expediture report for 2025.
Okay. Well, you have 45 seconds, so you can comment on those three items.
Okay. So I oppose the Monday.com software acquisition, mostly because Monday.com is heavily AI. AI is not only, you know, absolutely environmentally destructive. It sucks up a ton of water and it emits a lot, both of which will hurt cities like Camrio. But also, um, shoot, nevermind. Yeah, that's the main. And then it's just two, the city council meetings at 5:00, that is not accessible for working people. And three, if you stop, stop.
Thank you.
Okay. The next person is Patrick.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Patrick Robinson. I'm the owner of Bosco Constructors. I'm here tonight to talk about the Pleasant Valley By-Clain Project and the rejection of all bids. Bosco Constructors is the lowest bidder, responsive bidder. And Toro Enterprises' original protest letter was proven to be meritless, and the city agreed. The city notified Bosco of the intent to award the project to Bosco. I'd like to bring to your attention tonight that Toro Enterprises' supplemental protest letter dated October 20th, that was sent to the city, was not timely and was never forwarded to Bosco Constructors, Inc. The city is now using this supplemental protest letter as a basis to reject all bids. And Bosco Constructors was never given an opportunity to respond to the supplemental protest letter. Bosco Constructors subcontractors have rights that need to be protected. The IFR ruling on DBE participation does not supersede California listing laws. And the supplemental protest letter is incorrect and should not be recognized because California listing laws remain in effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Consent Calendar, Items J through AD. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a comment on Item N on the report from our independent auditors, and I would like to pull Item L, the regular meeting schedule, just for a brief discussion.
Do we need to pull it, or would you be able to ask questions for clarification?
Well, I can ask, let me make some observations for clarification.
Okay. Let's, let's leave it there now, and then we'll discuss it. So Item N is in November?
Item N is in November. And just a brief comment, I wanted to congratulate our finance department staff, and particularly Mark and Pam. And if I'm missing anybody, forgive me. This is a clean audit. It is a transparent audit. Typically, the city in past years has won the Government Finance Officers Award. And I'm darn sure that this, that the city will obtain that again this year because of the efforts of staff and the extraordinary efforts of our finance department staff, of which I'm very proud. This city's finances are transparent. They're well thought out, and it's evident in the, in the, in the, in the audit reports. So I, I just wanted to say thank you because I have the utmost confidence in our, in our finance staff. So just wanted to give them kudos. That's my only comment with respect to N.
Okay. Any other council members on N as in November?
I want to ditto what Councilmember Tremblay has stated here, too. I'm very proud of our finance department. I come from a time when we didn't have a lot of money in the city, and now we're doing a whole, whole lot better. So I want to comment on Mark and your staff and management and councils, too, to have this, we're very proud of your work. Ditto to what Councilmember Tremblay said.
And Mr. Tremblay, Item L?
Well, Item L, I just noticed that there were some dates on their, on the regular meeting schedule that conflict with conferences that we typically will attend. And, and so I wanted to inquire of the mayor, inquire of the city manager, what, what, if anything, you wanted to do about it. I'll just note, for example, the January 14 regular meeting is during the middle of the California Association of Sanitation Agencies Conference. And the February 25 meeting on the schedule is typically back, we're usually in, on the East Coast on February, I guess this year on February 23, 24, which means we'll have to be back on February 25, which is fine. But the other conflict is April 22, which is typically the League of Cities meeting. My suggestion for a solution, if anybody was wondering for a solution, is we might consider changing the January 14 meeting to January 12 and the April 22 meeting to April 20, but I'm, I'm open. I just wanted to make sure, though, that we were, I guess I was concerned about adopting a regular meeting schedule where we've got these conflicts. And the January 14, I think, is our next council meeting. So I thought it needed to be addressed tonight.
I guess what I'd ask is for the city manager to query the council members. The January 14th is the CASA Conference, is that correct? Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
I'd ask the city manager to query the council members to see how many plan on attending. And if we have four people that aren't planning on attending, then I'd suggest we keep the same calendar, and we can adjust the agenda to suit that with a potential council member absent. Mr. City Manager?
Right. We can do that. We can do that tonight. This item typically, and Councilmember Tremblay is right, it's really to set the, our standing committees consistent with our municipal code. And probably as importantly, the meetings that we would potentially go dark. For example, the November meeting or the December meetings were typically darkened, and then one in the summertime. So as far as the meetings that may conflict with, we traditionally, I think, brought those back on an individual basis based on the council's interest in, in attending some of these conflicts or not, and then we don't. Councilmember Tremblay is correct in that we will not meet again with regards to this first meeting in January. So if there is a majority of the council that would like to attend that CASA meeting, then we could certainly move that, that one up. And then I would recommend we base the other ones on a case-by-case basis, as needed.
So we, we have typically adjusted this during the year when we have these conflicts come up. So I guess what I'd ask is a query of the council right now on who attends, intends to attend CASA in January. Councilmember Santangelo?
I'm not sure yet.
I know Councilmember Tremblay is, is the president of CASA. Councilmember Kildie?
I'm planning on it.
Well, there we have it. So I guess I would entertain, I don't know if we need a motion to, to move that or if we can just discuss that next week?
Yeah, we could, we could, I'd recommend we move it tonight to, to the Monday. That would probably be ideal. Councilmember Tremblay, you do have a board meeting on the 13th, correct?
Got a board meeting on, on the 13th, but the 12th is clear, and that's the...
The Monday.
That's following the first week of January, so from a burden on, I think that lessens the burden on city staff.
Yeah, we can handle that.
Preparation and sending out an agenda.
So we'll change that one to the 12th, Monday, the 12th, for our first council meeting in January. And the other ones we can address as those trips come a little bit nearer. Is that acceptable?
Be prudent.
Sure.
Is that a motion?
No, we have the consent.
Do we need to, oh, that's right.
I don't think we need a motion.
It wasn't polled.
I'm sorry, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
And that the motion includes that we're changing the meeting to January 12?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move approval of the consent calendar with, including the revision to Item L.
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Sorry, Kerry.
Yeah, I'm trying to see something new, so let's see what happens.
How about a roll call? My screen's not popping up.
Here we go.
It should now. And I'm dismissing one vote.
Me. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So that, I want to go ahead and put that as yes and close that. And that passes.
Thank you. Next, we will move to Item AE, Zoning Ordinance Amendment to the Camrio Municipal Code, Chapters 9.12, 19.26, and 19.58, pertaining to retail off-sale alcohol establishments in the CPD Zone and Public Nuisance Regulations. And Mr. McLaren, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and congratulations on your new appointments this evening. So this process began with a moratorium enacted in January 22nd of 2025 as Urgency Ordinance Number 2028, which is, which paused new retail off-sale alcohol permits citywide. It was extended on February 26th, 2025, for 10 months and 15 days pursuant to Government Code 65858. The purpose of the moratorium was to address a rising number of applications for off-sale alcohol uses, evaluate land use enforcement, ABC regulations, and public health impacts, and to review and analyze zoning approaches of other cities. Key identified issues were high concentration of retail off-sale alcohol establishments near freeway ramps. The proposed code amendment prohibits type 20, 21 retail off-sale alcohol uses in tenant spaces or businesses under 7,500 square feet that are within a quarter mile of US 101 ramps and in the CPD Zone. On August 28th, the 2025, the Economic Development and Land Use Committee recommended ordinance move forward, and the Planning Commission recommended that the council adopt the ordinance on November 24th, or November 4th, 2025. There are many inconvenient, or there are many convenience-type retail locations that concentrate near the city's interchanges. These businesses are typically around 4,500 square feet of net building area and often only employ one person per shift and are known as small-format stores. Allowing all of these retail locations to begin selling alcohol could result in an extreme concentration near the interchanges. To demonstrate the impacts of the proposed ordinance, there's, here are a few examples. In this slide, the green pins are large-format stores within a quarter mile of the Los Poses Caltrans right-of-way. The red pins are existing alcohol CUPs in small-format stores. These could become legal non-conforming. The purple pins are potential locations that could obtain CUPs under the current ordinance. If the potential locations obtain CUPs, it could result in an 83% increase in concentration. At Carmen Drive, the interchange, at the Carmen Drive Interchange, one business could become legal non-conforming, and it is likely the city could experience a 75% increase in concentration without this ordinance amendment. At Santa Rosa Road, interchange near the high school, two businesses could become legal non-conforming, and it is likely the city could experience a 50% increase in concentration without this ordinance amendment. In summary, if passed, this ordinance would make some existing legally operating alcohol retailers legal non-conforming uses. To prevent these existing businesses from becoming adversely impacted by this amendment, additional protections are recommended in the amendment to be added to the non-conforming section of the code, Section 19.58.120. These recommendations allow the CUP to stay in effect for 65 days if an existing business shuts down, which gives the landlord time to locate a new operator. The CUP is tied to the property, not the business. Changes are allowed to the building to complete demolition and reconstruction, but the alcohol sales area can never be expanded to more than 49% of the currently existing business space. These changes provide a clear path for continued business vitality while improving public... These changes provide a clear path for continued business vitality while improving public safety controls. In consultation with the police department and code compliance, staff identify that enforcement tools, existing enforcement tools for off-sales establishments, particularly those with repeated ABC violations or ongoing property maintenance issues, are not sufficiently robust. Revisions to Municipal Code 9.12.020 are proposed to strengthen the city's ability to address violations such as unruly behavior, unlawful alcohol sales, excessive noise, inadequate property maintenance, failure to maintain required security or training, and patterns of service calls. These updates will improve the police department and code's, code compliance's ability to prevent adverse community impacts associated with this land use. Passage of the proposed amendment supports the city council's strategic goals by strengthening public safety, thereby protecting residents and businesses. Staff is recommending the council find the ordinance exempt from SEQA and introduce an ordinance amending chapters 19.12, 19.26, and, I'm sorry, 9.12, 19.26, and 19.58. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the first question. You said it extends it by 65 days. I thought I read 365.
I'm sorry, did I misspeak? It was 365 days.
Thank you. Any other council questions for Mr. McLaren? Mr. Tremblay?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Got used to saying that. Thanks for a good presentation. I'm, I'm, I want to make sure I understand, though, the impact on the non-conforming use properties. On page one of the staff report, it says that the members of the Economic Development and Land Use Committee recommended that non-conforming uses be allowed to continue for 365 days rather than the proposed 180 days. I know you had a slide on that. On page two, it says at the bottom of the staff report that specifically businesses that were legally operating at the time of the ordinance's adoption may continue to do so regardless of ownership changes. So is my understanding correct in that if a business, let's say a store that's selling alcohol shuts down, then it would, there would be a period of 365 days for allowing a non-conforming use so, so a new potential user of that property could come into place? Versus, is, and is it also correct to say that if a business doesn't ever shut down, it continues to legally operate as a non-conforming use? Otherwise, I couldn't reconcile those two statements in the staff report.
Yes, you're, you're accurate. Let me give an example. Not to pick on them, but Cheers Liquor Store would become a non-conforming use. That is over off of Verdugo.
Right.
Near Santa Rosa. They would become a non-conforming use if that owner were to just continue as is, he can continue as is as a non-conforming use in perpetuity. If he decided that he wanted to back out and he was done, he's going to retire, something along those lines, and he just leaves without finding somebody to buy his business, the CUP is still in effect for a full 365 days for that landlord to find an operator and then be able to move in and take over that CUP.
Okay, so that, that confirms my understanding. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's it.
Any other questions? None? This is a advertised public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
I do not have any speaker cards on this one.
All right, given that there are no speaker cards, any other comments? Oh, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from council?
Questions or comments?
We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move items, I'll move recommended items one and two.
And I can second that.
We have a motion in a second, Madam Clerk.
I'll just ask for the vote for, for Councilmember Kildy. Is that a yes? That, that passes unanimously.
Thank you. That's the last item on the agenda. I'll ask our city attorney to provide a report on our closed session.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. We were in closed session on three items, and there was no reportable action to, to make.
Thank you, and I would like to extend my tremendous thanks to staff and the council for allowing me my full pause this evening. I promise I'll get better as time goes on, and I do want bigger font. The meeting is adjourned.